Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 8th, 2024 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask you that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
First up on the docket, consent, the consent agenda. Any questions, comment, or action on item three?
Move to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion to second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket passes with a vote of five to zero. Don't have anyone signed up to speak on any of the items except on, or I do. I do have, you're right, I do. Thank you for nodding at me. I do have one person signed up to speak on items which are not scheduled for public hearings tonight, but we are willing to, and interested to hear comment on. So I have one person signed up? I have two? I have one. Nope, I have two. I got two. I found it, sorry. Hey, it's a new year. It's been a while. All right, I have two folks signed up to speak tonight, and I will call you up. Please introduce yourself, let us know where you live, and you'll have three minutes to speak on the agenda item that you are here to speak about. First up is Sharon Bennett.
I'm sure. Good evening. I live at 711 West Yoot, the neighborhood where the proposed new animal shelter is going. There's several of our neighbors back here. We've been talking. We have a lot of concerns with this. I'll be really quick because I don't have much time. Bullet point list, traffic, we already have wide streets, people speed up and down as it is. We just concerned about the more traffic coming through with people dropping off dogs. Also, airport can be very busy. Really, the speed limit there is way too fast, so just concerns about that. Also dumped animals. People may be tempted, because it's going to be a wooded area, just to let, if it's not open, just to let their animals loose. We have chickens. I would not like that. Noise issues, not just from the actual shelter, because we know y'all are doing some mitigation for that, but what about when the industry really gets going right next door? Noise issues for the animals. Also, what happens when Boomer Blast happens? Environmental impact, both on the trees. We understand you're going to try to leave as many trees as possible, but we love that wooded area. It's an important wildlife area, so we'd hate to see, there's a lot of birds there, and it's one of the last wild places around Boomer Lake that really enjoy, especially a lot of walkers. The Leiken Academy, not able to have access to that anymore as therapy, both for them and the animals. That's a huge impact. I think needs more discussion of how we can mitigate that. And again, I just think it's too close to our residential area, and I know you looked at other sites. I know land's expensive, but I really think, you know, I know it's up for vote soon, possibly in April, but seems like it's rushing it. So I'd appreciate y'all considering those points. That being said, we to, I totally agree that it needs to be a new shelter, updated, all the things, because we know that is an issue. That's not the issue. This just is the location of it. And again, we'd like to really carefully consider where it's putting, being put. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I have Jerry and Connie Crawford. I don't know if both of you are planning to speak or just one?
Possibly.
Okay.
If I mess up, she may fill in.
I understand.
Okay. I'm Jerry Crawford. I live at 601 West Yoot Avenue, and we bought this property probably close to 25 years ago, and a lot of the draw was that that neighboring property was actually a bird sanctuary or a wildlife sanctuary. Where it lost that designation, I have no idea. There used to be a sign at the corner of Airport Road and Noblock that designated it as a sanctuary. And to bring in an animal shelter to help the animals is going to disrupt all the animals that are there now. And there's whitetail deer, there's turkey, there's foxes. Everything is basically native to Oklahoma, that lives in that large area. And we have bald eagles that come through that migrate during this time of the year, actually. And the noise level and different odors and everything will definitely change the whole situation there. Now, I don't know whether we're going to be able to vote on this at a later point or not. I mean, not necessarily the bond, but the location. And that's basically my opposition, is that the area that we live in has been, that was part of my draw to own this property, is the wildlife area right next door, and it's going to be altered. We had eight, 10 deer in our backyard a couple days ago, and they're not going to be around when you have dogs barking like crazy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Crawford?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Well, we thank you all for being here and for your input, and we will address that issue here in a minute on the agenda. Actually, next up on the agenda. Item six, six A is to consider action directing staff to prepare a resolution. Calling for general obligation bond election for April 2nd, 2024, in an amount not to exceed 6.75 million for a new Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility to be located at northeast corner of West Airport Road and North Noblock Street. I'll just note that Counselor Clark stepped out. He does not, because of his profession, doesn't consider bond issues as part of his role here. So Dawn Dotson will introduce the item for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. On December 18th, Brian Thomas with 505 Architects and I presented detailed information regarding the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility. We discussed that the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility was determined a few years ago by community members and staff as a time project, since it is inadequate, inefficient, and overall in poor condition. We discussed two location options, near the existing site on South Main Street and a new site near Boomer Lake at the northeast corner of West Airport Road and North Noblock Street. The location at Airport and Noblock is a larger space that would allow for future expansion, a dog park and a walking trail. It is in a natural setting near Boomer Lake that would increase visibility and allow for easy public access, and the land is highly wooded, and we would do selective clearing. Brian shared an outdoor noise level analysis to best determine effects on the nearby neighborhood. He included that the trees would be a buffer. The other location for consideration is near the existing Animal Welfare Facility on South Main. It is known within the community and is adjacent to Fire Station One. The noise from the station does add stress on animals, but the usable land is limited due to being near a flood zone and the fire station. Building at this location would also limit future expansion of the existing fire station and fire administration office. Also for consideration are funding sources, a general obligation bond in amounts of 5 million or 6.75 million. The amounts determine the facility size and specifications. I just want to mention again that the location near Boomer Lake can house either the 5 million or 6.75 million, but the site on Main Street can house only the 5 million facility. Now, Brian went in depth into this comparison at the December 18th meeting, so I encourage anyone and everyone to please go back and look at his detailed information with this. We wanted to include this chart again this evening in case needed for reference. Please remember that the existing kennels at our existing site, they are very small, and the new kennels on either space would be much larger and can serve as two kennels with a divider. For instance, if you look at the 6.75, you'll see that there are 44 to 59 kennels. These are double the size of the existing kennels, so there would be a divider in place in times where there's high surrenders, low adoptions, and so these, this would actually create 88 to 118 kennel spaces. This is estimated annual and month impact on property taxes, with scenarios for both geo-bond amounts 5 million and 6.75 million with different term lengths. As we shared on December 18th, an example, if voters passed a bond proposition in the amount of 6.75 million for a 10-year period, the yearly taxes for a $200,000 property would increase by approximately $55. That breakdown is less than $5 a month. We included this information again in our collective efforts to be fully transparent. Currently, our owners of a $200,000 property are paying $32.90 each year for the new fire station, and with the example I just gave, if the Animal Welfare Facility was added to this, their property taxes would be less than $90 a year. Again, the fire station is a 20-year bond, and the Animal Welfare Bond would be at most 10 years. The term lengths were determined by our municipal financial advisors to limit interest costs as much as possible and keep the tax to a more desirable rate for our residents. Also of note, the land for the new fire station was not owned by the city. The land at both locations being considered for Animal Welfare are owned by the city. Ultimately, we all want what is best for our residents, animals, and community. We need an efficient and we need a safe facility. We have met with community members, organizations, stakeholders, architects, engineers, financial advisors, and animal welfare staff. All have provided input and shared their thoughts. So far, the consensus is the location near Boomer Lake and the geo-bond amount of 6.75 million for an Animal Welfare Facility that will best serve our community today and 20 years from now with anticipated growth. At this time, are there any questions that we may try to answer?
Thank you, Dawn. Councilors?
Dawn, can you speak a little bit to what some of our citizens have been talking about today in terms of site selection and our process to date for that?
We have looked at, we went to other communities and looked at different Animal Welfare Facilities, and then we've really did a deep dive into our community for over a year, two years, to look at different locations within the community. Regarding the birds, the Payne County Audubon Society, we did go there to check to find out more information. We did contact our Wildlife Conservation State Entity, and then the Payne County Audubon Society. And so that would be, again, I want to talk about that selective clearing that we would do. We would not go into that flood area as much as possible where those very old trees are and where, we want to preserve nature as much as possible. If you look at the Edmund site, if you look at the Midwest City site, if you look at some of those Animal Welfare Facilities, that's what we want here. We want a natural place with a walking trail that preserves calmness and peace and protects from noise with the neighbors, and so this spot meets that. As far as the bird sanctuary, we did look at the species, and there are 50 or less in that specific area. However, Boomer Lake, just right across the street, has 250 species or less of birds. So again, very respectful of that. Our goal is to protect animals and to safeguard their homes and them. So we are definitely respectful of that, but we still feel as though the site is the Regarding the noise, we don't know, we don't know. And so that's why Brian Thomas did a noise level analysis, and that's why we worked with him, our Animal Welfare Facility staff, and leadership here, and engineers, and have worked closely with our architect to best provide that, those noise barriers, and again, preserving nature.
One other question that I was asked since our last meeting, I know one of the concerns with the current location is the noise from the fire station. The question I was asked was, does the airport pose a noise risk for the animals at the new location?
Well, the fire station is next door. Like, it's across, it's literally across, just right there, walking distance. The airport is a mile away. So that does, you know, help with, help with the noise with that. I would like to just circle back real quick, Vice Mayor. One of the concerns presented this evening was the high rates of speed and that large traffic area, and I apologize for not including this a few minutes ago. That is one thing that we looked at too, is to create a walking trail in an animal park over there and to build that, if we went with that location in the 6.75. If we go with the 5 million, we can't afford it, but if we go with the 6.75, and then we would create a crosswalk area with that and adapt those speeds as needed. So that is something we've already worked with our police on.
I do think that was part of the presentation previously, was the idea of the crosswalk. I think it might, was it mentioned?
I honestly can't remember if we mentioned it on the 18th. I feel like we did.
I feel like maybe so.
Yeah, okay.
Just something to maybe go back and look if folks are worried about it.
Make sure, yeah, for sure.
Dawn, do you know, I mean, I know that there were, these two are the only ones that ended up being viable sites, but several other sites were considered or looked at. I mean, you mentioned this, I don't know if we know specifically a couple that were looked at, or maybe some of the factors that made these two, is it just the room available? Was it just, what were, what are the factors that made these two sites the two viable ones that we're looking at tonight?
Well, we really wanted to look at, you know, available space and then costs associated with it to keep that expense as low as possible, but then also to have the best space that we could for the community. Also, traffic ways, we always have to be very aware of that and the roadways, and what is going to get high visibility? The last thing you want to do is create an animal welfare so far away from the community that nobody goes there. Another thing is we have to keep in mind the neighbors. I mean, that is 100% at the forefront of our mind as one of the factors, is we want to be respectful of the neighbor, of the neighborhoods of that, the noise, and we don't want to disrupt that area. And so those are just some of the factors that went into this. And then also, with this space, this does allow for us to have a dog park, an additional dog park, and it does allow for us to have an additional walking trail, and it's right there by Boomer Lake, which is frequently used within our community and utilized all the time. This would expand those trails, you know, for our multimodal community.
Ma'am, we don't do public comment in this part of the meeting. No, I'm sorry. No, just, just prior. Yeah. Counselor?
So one other thing that's been brought up to me is that this is a nice facility, but can we make sure that it's expandable without major refurbishment? So we build this 10 or 15 years down the road, we've got 40 or 50 kennels that can be doubled, and more than likely, we're going to need to grow again. Do we have space to grow, and will the design of the facility facilitate growth without major reworking of the facilities built?
From my understanding, yes. And Brian Thomas has built this facility, the 6.75, for 20 years out with anticipated growth of the community and the needs.
Dawn, do you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, sir. Staff recommendation. Motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution, calling for a general obligation bond election for April 2nd, 2024, in an amount not to exceed 6.75 million for a new Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility to be located at the northeast corner of West Airport Road and North Noblock Street.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, and this is maybe you, and maybe somebody else has to get up and answer this, but if we put this facility on a bond election, we have to actually, it has to be for a specific amount of money.
Yes.
And it has to be for a specific location.
Yes.
Right? We can't just say, let's pass a six and a half million dollar bond, and then we'll figure out where we're going to put it. We actually have to put that in the, in the election report. So while I think it would be helpful if we could do it the other way around, is unfortunately not an option under the, under the law. This action tonight would be for you guys to bring back a resolution at our next meeting two weeks from now, in which point we would then have to vote on a resolution to actually put it on the ballot, which that election would happen on April 2nd.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, councilors. Comments, discussion, action?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
We do have a motion and a second to accept a staff's recommendation to direct them to prepare a resolution for our next meeting. To that end, that gives another opportunity, more opportunity for folks to comment between now and then on this specific location and facility, but we do have a motion and a second on the table to direct staff to prepare a resolution. Further comments? Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. So we will look forward to hearing more about that next, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Item 6B is consider approval of a project schedule and interim guaranteed minimum, excuse me, maximum price for the new fire station number two, and authorize the city manager to execute the documents. Ms. Starn?
Thank goodness it's Max and not Min.
Yeah.
Mayor and councilors, I'm Candy Starn with the Engineering Department here tonight, representing, actually, and supporting the fire department and other city departments on the fire station number two, project that's going to be located along western between McElroy and Lakeview. This presentation covers two agenda items, so as I get to the end, I'm going to make two separate recommendations on two separate slides, so we can focus on one and then the other. And I'm here tonight to talk about the next steps in the C-MAR project, which involves the execution of certain exhibits. As we move through these bid efforts, those exhibits get executed. Background, on April 5th, 2022, the voters of Stillwater approved the $9 million bond issue for relocation of the fire station. This was a TIM initiative, T-I-M-E is the acronym for Together Investing in Municipal Excellence. So the first slide here is talking about the interim guaranteed max price for fire station number two, and it goes through the total projected cost of the fire station and all services provided through the C-MAR, the first being the preconstruction service that we contracted six months ago, and then the estimated cost of the work at 7.1 plus million, and then direct project support, the C-MAR fee, construction contingency, and all those things add up to 7,938,220. So this is more than we initially projected at 7.5 million, and we have tweaked our overall budget for our bond, our $9 million bond, to make room for this extra $438,000. So we're not over our total budget, we're still within our total budget, we're just over what we expected the fire station to cost. And then as part of this exhibit execution process, we also have to do a lump sum conversion of the bid award we've already done, which was for the four trades, demo and earthwork, site concrete, site utilities, and storm sewer. And those four trades that we selected for bid package one were a little bit over a million, and then we add all the adders and the fees, and get to a total of 1.297 million roughly, and this was the award that you all did last time I saw you in December. And then we add the preconstruction services that I mentioned previously, and we get to a partial lump sum conversion amount of 1,330,888.13. This is just step one of a lump sum conversion, because after we do bid package two for many other trades, I'll come back and ask you to do the lump sum conversion for most likely the rest of the work. Should we have one or two trades that we say, those are later in construction, we really want to try again for a better number, or we want to tweak our scope on those to see if we can come under, then we could possibly have three lump sum conversions. And just to go back over schedule, in December and January, you're going to start to see beginning of work, and our contracts are executed now, and then construction for work package one will be complete in March. We'll do bidding for work package two in January and February, and the overall project we expect to be completed in July 2025. Any questions from anybody?
So this C-MAR, we had some good input from our city attorney on this, but, so once these are converted to lump sum packages, then the construction manager is at risk if he can't bring it in for that price, that's his problem then, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but still, at this point, it has not, that has not been done. So if there's something else that we need to bid out, it may change.
The price may change, is the question?
Yes.
Yeah, so any overages on line item quantity totals, those are all the C-MAR's cost to bear. And when we bid the next work package, if it comes in higher than the 7.9 number, then we are talking to you all and city management, and making sure we have looked, you know, turned over every stone to reduce cost and done everything we can do, and if we decide to go over that number, then we would, we would look for budgets to handle that. That can be just because of bids, that can be because we've got some scope items, and we are doing alternates. So for bid two, I think we have six or eight alternates. Chief Esri is here, sure he doesn't want to help me, but there's, yeah, there's, okay, and so there's like the awning or the gazebo being out front is one of them, and we'll bid that as a, if we come in at the right number, fine, we'll do it, sort of like Block 34, but if we don't, it's going to get nixed. And there's some fencing and some landscaping that we took out of work package one, because there are some things that are optional, at some degree anyways, for landscaping, because there are requirements we have to meet for being on OSU's property. But things like that, we have alternates that we can try to get the number just right.
So again, let me understand, once we've converted this tonight, then the construction manager is responsible for bringing this package in at this price?
Yes, with one exception.
Yeah, so I'll help with this question. This project delivery method is just a little bit different than what we're used to seeing up here. The Construction Management Act for Political Subdivisions provides that you can convert a partial guaranteed maximum price for the relevant portions of the work. So here, we only have one work package, so we are converting to a partial GMP. Once you convert that to the partial GMP, that is a guaranteed price, but it is also, it is subject to any change orders. And that's not any different than any other project that we would competitively bid, it's just rather than getting a, you know, a bid that would be subject to change orders, and they've guaranteed to do the work for that amount, we're doing this, it allows you to do it phased for the relevant portions of work, which is also where the city realizes some of that flexibility in the decision-making process. At any time when these work packages are bid, the city can reject or award different portions of the work, so that's one of the benefits of this project delivery method. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, I think. So if they were to discover in the process of, of construction that there is earthwork that was not anticipated, they could come back to us with that, is that correct? Okay. And if they find Indian burial grounds, then we have to deal with that, right?
So, yes, however, I will say we're getting a little bit out of change order and probably a little bit into the weeds on some of the contract provisions, whether or not that would be like a differing condition, subsurface or something like that, might, we'd have to really get into the contract to answer those specific questions, but in general, that's, it's the guaranteed price, and they do bear the risk of any changes, provided that, like any other public project, there could be a change order that the city would have to agree to if there is a change scope, time, for, for good reason.
And if we come under, it's our savings.
Appreciate you throwing that in, just in case. So Candy, what is your recommendation on 6B?
6B recommendation is a motion for city council to approve the project schedule and the IGMP, and to authorize the city manager to execute Exhibits A1 and B2 as Exhibits to the Crossland Agreement for Construction Management at Risk C-MAR Services.
Counselors?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. And then item 6C?
Staff recommends a motion to city council, for city council to approve amendment number one to the Crossland C-MAR Services Agreement regarding a partial conversion to guaranteed maximum price and authorize the city manager to execute said amendment number one.
Counselors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. I'm looking forward to watching the sunset out there in July of 2025. I assume there'll be a big sunset party or something.
Hopefully with a pavilion.
Yeah. Item seven is resolution. 7A, resolution CC-2024. Item seven is resolution, 7A, resolution CC-2024-1. A resolution of the city council, excuse me, a resolution of the city council of the city of Stillwater establishing a process for the implementation of the requirements of 11 OS Section 51-108, including establishing the process for calling and scheduling elections pursuant to said statute. Ms. Carnley?
So this resolution addresses municipal collective bargaining with the Fraternal Order of Police and the International Association of Firefighters. The resolution implements the statutory requirements and establishes a process for calling and scheduling elections under state law. So adoption of this resolution would establish clear guidelines concerning the process by identifying the city manager as the corporate authority under state law, which specifically would authorize the city manager to negotiate, accept or reject arbitration awards, and if the parties fail to reach an agreement, to request a special election as provided under state law. It would also authorize the city manager to execute collective bargaining agreements within budgeted funds. So really approval of this resolution aligns our collective bargaining process with our city charter and our counselor-manager form of government process for handling personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Carnley. Counselors, any questions? Motion on the item?
I move we adopt resolution CC-2024-1.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. That resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Next up, ordinances. On second read, ordinance number 3529, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3 ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-52, adoption of the ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, and Section 10-53, amendments to the ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, specifically adoption of the ICC International Building Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto, Article 4 International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, 2015 Edition, Section 10-88, adoption of the ICC International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings, 2015 Edition, specifically adoption of the ICC International Residential Building Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 5 International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-111, adoption of the ICC International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-112, amendments to the ICC International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 8 Plumbing Standards, Division 2 International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-289, adoption of the ICC International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-290, amendments to the ICC International Plumbing Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Plumbing Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 9 International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-374, adoption of the ICC International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-375, amendments to the ICC International Fuel Gas Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Fuel Gas Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. Article 10 Mechanical Standards, Division 1 International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-396, adoption of the ICC International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, Section 10-397, amendments to the ICC International Mechanical Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Mechanical Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto. 11 Electricity, Division 2 National Electric Code 2014 Edition, Section 10-485, adoption of the National Electrical Code 2014 Edition, and Section 10-486, amendments to the National Electrical Code 2014 Edition, specifically adopting the National Electrical Code 2020 Edition and amendments thereto. Amending Chapter 20 Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3 ICC International Building Code 2015 Edition, Section 2049, adoption of the ICC International Fire Code 2015 Edition, Section 20-50, amendments to the ICC International Fire Code 2015 Edition, specifically adopting the International Fire Code 2018 Edition and amendments thereto, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Did you read that?
No, I cannot.
Motion to adopt ordinance 3529.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is adopted and I never have to read it again.
And that was just the title.
I know. Item B is ordinance 3530, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 16 Crimes, Miscellaneous Offenses and Provisions. Article 6 Offenses Involving Minors, Division 2 Prevention of Youth Access to Tobacco, Section 16-152 Definitions and Section 16-153 Furnishing of Tobacco Products to Minors, and Section 16-154 Purchase, Receipt or Possession of Tobacco Products by Minors, and Section 16-155 Distribution of Tobacco Product Samples to Minors, and Section 16-156 Sale of Tobacco Products Except in Original Sealed Packaging, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Counselors?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3530.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. An ordinance is adopted with a vote of 35, excuse me, a vote of five to zero. Ordinance 3530 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Reports from the officers and the board, Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Meek?
Beginning January 23rd, our police department will begin the Ninth Annual Citizens Academy. The academy provides members a unique look behind the scenes and firsthand experience into many areas of law enforcement and how our police officers serve the community. This is a multi-week educational course that includes real life scenarios and a ride-along with an officer while on duty. For information on the academy and how to get involved, contact Lieutenant TJ Low at terry-low@stillwater.org.
The Citizens Academy is fantastic. If you haven't done it, you should definitely work on that if you can do it this year or next year or whenever you can do it. It's a lot of, a lot of great information. Vice Mayor?
It's that time of year again to purchase a rural fire state, fire service contract if you live outside of city limits but within the city of Stillwater Fire Department's response area. The contracts are only $100 and ensure that response fees for each fire incident on a contracted property will not exceed $2,000. All collected fees go toward training, rescue tools, and other fire equipment. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/ruralfire.
Thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
Did you know that we have a citizen request tracker on our new website? This is an avenue for residents to report concerns regarding drainage and flooding, streetlights, streetlight outages, trash collection issues, animal control requests, and much more. Please consider using this system to let our employees know concerns that need to be checked out and possibly repaired. To get started, go to stillwaterok.gov forward slash report.
That actually is a really great feature of the website. We've had kind of a feature like that for a while, but I send people that all the time and I always get excellent feedback back from them. They say, oh yeah, we reported it online, somebody got back to me, the issue got taken care of, so would definitely commend that to anybody out there. Counselor Clark?
If you'd like to get involved in your local government, we have many boards and committees for consideration. The city is accepting applications for citizen representatives to serve on the Tourism Advisory Committee, Public Housing Authority, Board of Adjustment, Audit Committee, and Airport Advisory Board. Each board consists, and committee consists of five to seven members with a term length of three years. For more information or to apply online, go to stillwaterok.gov/sitismboards.
Thank you so much. Counselor Harden?
Please remember to apply or renew your burger or fire alarm permit registration with the city of Stillwater. Permits are $6 per alarm for your property. Government entities and residents who are at least 62 years of old do not have to pay fees. Applications are available Stillwater Police Department and online at stillwaterok.gov. We want to help in all ways possible to keep you and your family protected and safe.
Thank you. I will let you all know that Stillwater Community United will have their annual Unity Event to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on Sunday, January 14th. The event begins at 6:00 PM at the Stillwater Community Center. Also, the annual Unity March with OSU will be on Monday, January 15th, beginning at 1:00 PM. All residents are encouraged to join in both events. For more information about these events, including the Unity March map, go to visitstillwater.org. Also, city offices will be closed in observance of the holiday on Monday, January 15th, but trash, recycling, and yard waste will be collected as usual. Seeing nothing further on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the January 8th, 2024 meeting of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. Trustees, action on the consent docket.
Please pull item B.
Item B is removed from the consent docket. Action on the remaining items.
I move approval of the consent docket excluding item B.
We have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus item B.
Oh, sorry, before we take a vote on that, Counselor Harden, do you want to review if you intended to pull item 2B or 2C?
Sorry, 2B.
2B is the copper primary conductor.
Yes.
Okay, all right, sorry, misunderstanding.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket except for item B. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. That takes us to item four, items removed from the consent docket. Counselor Harden, do you have a question?
I do. There was a list of bids on this and there was a low bidder of $55,000 that was not accepted. It has to go with another bidder, $66,000, and I was just curious why.
John McClany, procurement manager, I'm filling in for Lauren tonight, who is on vacation. The reason that we didn't go with the low bidder is they didn't meet the specs. And specifically, the differences, I understand it, is that our specification required a neutral that is a bundle of copper wire cable and the low bidder provided a copper tape, and that's not in compliance with our standards.
I'll turn my mic on and say thank you.
Thanks, John. Counselor Harden is, or excuse me, trustee Harden, action on that item?
Motion to approve item 2B.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 2B from the consent docket, please With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Any reports from the officers or the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.